All right, well, without further ado, great to see you all here for tonight's town hall meeting. Council is having recently initiated a renewed focus on our flood mitigation planning, and in fact, refined our focus on the subject to one of flood risk management. We've progressed our way through some excellent discussions over a couple of workshop sessions, and we now welcome you to this town hall meeting, the purpose of which is to share with you an overview of our discussions up to this point, as well as to receive your public input to help guide our policy decision-making moving forward. So we appreciate all of you who are here to participate, as well as those who have tuned in and are watching from home. At this time, I'll look to our interim city manager, Deacon Tittle, if you'll please go over the procedure for the town hall meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's town hall meeting is to present the information and receive public comment concerning flood risk management and objectives and priorities for the city of Bel Air. You will see a short presentation regarding flood risk management objectives and the priorities for the city of Bel Air presented, introduced by Mike Leach, Director of Public Works and Development Services, and Ross Gordon, Councilmember. At the end of the presentation, the floor will be opened up for public comment, in which the mayor will recognize speakers who have completed a sign-up sheet prior to the commencement of the town hall meeting. Each speaker shall have a limit up to five minutes with no extension and with no after, I'm sorry, with notice after four minutes and one minute left. Questions for the public shall be addressed to the mayor and the mayor and members of the city council. May refer such questions to staff as appropriate. The mayor and council will have the opportunity to ask questions and may refer to staff for any additional questions from the public as well.
Thank you very much, Deacon.
Yes, sir.
Going back to the beginning of these discussions, Councilmember Gordon and Director Leach have been working together on bringing this initiative forward, and so I'll turn it over to the two of them for tonight's presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Michael Leach, your Public Works and Development Services Director, really appreciate this opportunity to provide an introduction to the presentation this evening. So, for several years, and as you well know, staff and our consulting team have been working to complete the Master Drainage Concept Plan. The Master Drainage Concept Plan, of course, is a cooperative effort undertaken by Tech Dot, Harris County Flood Control, and Bel Air. Houston was also a partner on that project, though they didn't participate financially. Delighted to report that that work is complete. I think that plan, that master plan or concept plan gave us three big benefits. One, it provides solutions through which our partners in Bel Air, we may elect to proceed down some of those avenues outlined in the concept plan itself. Critically, it aligns us with requirements for next steps in regards to the procurement of funding. Some of those next steps could be preliminary engineering, design, and ultimately, construction of improvements. But one other that you might not think about directly is it helped us build really good, extra-strong relationships with Harris County Flood Control, as well as Houston and Tech Dot. So, I think the bottom line is, it really let the region know that we are serious about making drainage improvements in Bel Air. So, we're delighted to report that that work is complete. So, what are the next steps? I think engagement with the public is really critical and an excellent next step. So, what I'm excited about with this opportunity is to hear what the public, hear what the community has to say about what standards we should implement moving forward, in terms of construction projects, in terms of levels of service, and things like that. Funding, of course, is always a critical component of discussions like these. As we've reviewed, there are never any cheap solutions to drainage, especially when you're looking at projects of this scope. Pleased to report that we've engaged several entities for, to talk about funding now and in the future down the line. A handful of those include the Texas Water Development Board, FEMA, they have a couple of programs that, through which we hope to be able to secure funding one day to implement some of these possible solutions, as well as the General Land Office and HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Group. So, levels of service, I think we can simply distill this question down into the mayor's blog. I thought he did a really nice job of painting that picture for us. What was shown was a picture of a flooded street with the question, is this a, is this an unacceptably flooded street, or is this a cost-effective use of right-of-way to provide flood protection? So, perhaps the answer to what the level of service should be lies somewhere in the balance there. What is the right answer? What is the right fit for Bel Air? And it's good to have the public input on that. Couple of other key things that I'd hoped to get feedback on tonight are prioritization of improvement locations. What makes sense? What should be improved first? We've talked about addressing the areas that were impacted the worst by Harvey and past floods first, but perhaps there are other concepts here in the room that may be shared with us that may provide a little different perspective on that. So, in regards to projects that may move forward, what's the phaseability like with those projects? Are they modular? Should we be looking along those lines for improvements? So, there's a lot to discuss, and very excited to be able to transition to this next phase, pass the Master Drainage Concept Plan, and into these discussions about service levels and how we proceed as an organization and as a community, as we move towards implementing some solutions. So with that, I'm delighted to kick it off, or hand it over to Ross Gordon, Councilmember Gordon, to walk through the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mike. I hope that I can give this presentation in about 20 minutes or so, and we have a couple of quick goals for this presentation. Number one, it's always important for us as a community to continue to elevate our collective understanding of flooding, of the challenges we face, because as a community, we have to make these decisions together. What we hope to do today is to present some of the draft goals and objectives that we've been working through over the past month or two, get your feedback on those, and help to lay out for you what our roadmap is to do two things, which is, one, to act quickly and decisively on near-term beneficial actions, and two, to be able to do it inside a long-term strategic framework that provides the greatest opportunity to address our flood risk in the most cost-effective manner. This planning process is very important, because we, as a city council, and we, as a community, have to provide clear direction to our staff and our consultants on what we hope to achieve, on what schedule, and at what level of cost. Those are very, very difficult questions to be able to distill down into concise direction for staff. And we also aim, through this process, to deliver a goal-oriented infrastructure program. We have a level of risk reduction that we'd like to achieve, or a level of risk that we're willing to live with, and our goal is, how do we get there in the most cost-effective and cost-efficient manner for our taxpayers? And that must be the goal of our planning process, is to inform good, sound decisions that are in the best interest of, of all Bel Air residents. So, moving forward, we've talked in the last few workshops, trying to understand the different challenges that Bel Air faces. And so, very quickly, we have a, two different types of flooding that impact our community. The first is riverine flooding, or fluvial flooding, which is when Braze Bayou overtops its banks and floods our community. This is reflected most obviously in the FEMA floodplain maps that we all know and understand, and is a real threat to Bel Air. On multiple occasions, Braze Bayou has overtopped its banks and has impacted our community. Another type of flooding is urban flooding, or fluvial flooding, and this is related to the ability of our infrastructure within the city of Bel Air to convey storm water from where it lands in our front yards or on our roofs, through our community, and to Braze Bayou, which is the ultimate outfall for runoff in Bel Air. This type of flooding is often less understood and less well-known, and is actually not typically reflected in floodplain maps that are produced by FEMA. But this is related to the conveyance of runoff through our storm sewers, our ditches, and our channels. And what's also important to note, and that's the third point here, is the, the degrees of flooding. You can classify flooding in a variety of different ways. We have nuisance flooding, which is street ponding that may make it harder for you to get out of your driveway, or may make you turn and go a different direction to get around a flooded intersection. We have flooding that severely restricts or impacts mobility and emergency access. Those are impassable roads, where if you needed emergency services, would the emergency services be able to get to your house? We also have flooding which damages property, be that cars or houses, and at the very worst end, we have flooding that can create life safety risks, whether from drowning or other causes. All of these things are different things that we must think about and consider as we are looking at flooding and how we want to handle managing these types of flooding in our city. But what's very important, as we talk about drainage in our community, is that streets are an integral component of our drainage system. In our urban drainage system, we have what we like to call the primary drainage system, which is typically your storm sewers or your ditches, and that's when the rain starts to fall, that's where the water ends up, and that's how it gets out of the community. That's the system that's always engaged with every rain event, that provides your basic level of service. Unfortunately, it's not always possible to construct that drainage system to be as robust as it would need to be to be able to contain and convey runoff under all scenarios. And that's when our secondary drainage system kicks in, which is our street system. Our street systems are designed to hold water, to convey water, and it's the combination of our storm sewer and our streets that provides us the level of protection that we have from flooding. And this is a very frustrating and complicated piece, because oftentimes, we see water in the street, we see what, what looks like our systems aren't working, but in reality, actually, across Houston, all of our drainage systems are designed with dual systems, being an underground system and a surface system, and those must be optimized to try and achieve our goals. There are a few other constraints that are very important for us to understand as we talk about drainage and flooding in Bel Air. The first piece is that Braze Bayou is quite close to us, and Braze Bayou, when you have a flat community like Bel Air, can significantly impact the ability of our local drainage systems to discharge water into Braze Bayou, meaning that when Braze Bayou is up high, our storm sewers will not function very well, because the bayou and our streets are at a very close elevation. And so, in understanding how our systems work, under which conditions, we have very variable circumstances, depending on how high Braze Bayou is. And this is a, one of the challenges of flood risk management, is understanding the timing of different occurrences. We don't always have a rainfall on Bel Air when Braze Bayou is peaking. Sometimes it happens before, sometimes it happens after, and that will dictate how our systems perform, based on how they relate to water levels in Braze Bayou. And the final constraint that we have, and this is adopted across the entirety of Harris County, is our no adverse impact policies, which basically aim to say that through our actions, we should not be worsening flooding elsewhere, and that's typically downstream. Whereas, if we are improving conveyance and getting floodwater out of Bel Air, if we move it downstream, then we're going to raise water surface elevations in Braze Bayou or flood other communities downstream. And through the adoption of uniform policies across the entire county, the aim is, is that as we do projects, that we do not create adverse impacts downstream. And that's a regulatory requirement associated with working with our regional drainage system. And this presents a lot of unique challenges for Bel Air in terms of how we can effectively mitigate the improvements of, of, of improving drainage inside Bel Air without impacting others. And Mike mentioned this slide, I think it's a, a good example of, of trying to quantify in this process what the definition of success is, and many people, as I said, can see this and have different opinions of this situation. The first opinion is, is an unacceptable outcome. We have floodwater everywhere, this shouldn't be happening, we need to have that street, that street dry, that street passable. The other opinion could be, this is a, a very efficient use of taxpayer dollars, that we have a system where the water elevation is not impacting houses, the water levels are in the front yards, we have not flooded structures, we are using our right-of-way to store runoff in a safe manner. Ultimately, what the city decides to do in terms of a level of service discussion will be somewhere on this spectrum. We can't live in a world where there will never be water in our streets, but we also don't want a world where there's always water in our streets. And that will come down a lot to understanding what it costs to achieve different levels of service, and ultimately, what we are okay with having, as we look at the benefits and the costs of, of tackling flood risk management. So, a couple of things for us to consider, and I call these the, the reality of flooding in Houston or Bel Air, is that every rain event or flood event can bring a combination of riverine and urban flood risks. People often always like to look for the one thing that caused a flood event or a circumstance to occur, but in our world, we can flood because of maintenance issues. You may have a clogged storm sewer that prevents your street from draining appropriately. You may have deficiencies in the local drainage, meaning that the storm sewer under your street was too small and couldn't get the water out, and the street wasn't graded to allow that water to move on down the way. You could have deficiencies in the semi-regional drainage system, and I say that as the major north-south collection systems that carry water from local streets down to the bayou. If those are undersized or surcharged, they won't accept water from our local streets and can cause areas off of them to flood. We also could flood because of deficiencies in regional drainage, and that being Braze Bayou. And we had talked about that before, about how Braze Bayou itself can overtop the banks and flood areas, but also, a high Braze Bayou could just inhibit the ability of our drainage system to perform at a high level. So there's a variety of reasons why we can flood, and that makes solving, and I say solving in a, in a, hesitantly, is that we have to be able to understand that different circumstances can, can happen, and we need to be able to look at each of these things and assess them, and understand what role they play in providing a safe environment and a safe community for our residents. The other thing that we have to be considering as we work on this, is that climate and rainfall patterns are changing, and that's being seen through the storm events that we've had in the last few years. Recently, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration has re-analyzed what the definition is of what's known as the, the hundred-year event, or the prob, the, the rain event that has the probability of occurring once every hundred years, or 1% each year. And that analysis looks back at a history of rainfall to determine the statistical probability of rain events occurring. And for many, many years, that was classified as 13 inches of rain in 24 hours. Based on including a full period of record that includes the last 10 years of time, that analysis has determined that the hundred-year rain event is now 17 inches. And when you look at a change of that magnitude, that is a tremendously significant change in our understanding of what rain events we should expect to occur, and what our obligations or requirements would be for handling rain events like that. And this has a, a real significant impact on our community. Project Braze, which we'll talk about a little bit, which is the big federal project completed by the Harris County Flood Control District on Braze Bayou, was designed 10-plus years ago, and it was designed essentially to provide a hundred-year level of service. But when you change the definition of what a hundred-year rain event is to 17 inches from 13 inches, it's actually providing a 25- to 50-year level of service. And that's one of the great challenges of a field where, kind of feel like we have moving goalposts, you know, the target, if we just designed to this, we'll be safe, but when the goalposts are moving, we have an interesting challenge of how do we make sure that we're looking into the future and understanding the conditions that we will be facing over a coming period of time. As the city looked at this, what we tried to do was look at it from a flood risk management perspective. We cannot control flooding, and the idea of flood control is a very difficult topic, because there are no guarantees. There, it will always be different types of rain events, there will always be something that you can't prevent against. But what we aim to do is to manage that risk as best as we can to achieve an acceptable risk profile. Everybody has a different understanding of, of what's too risky, what's not risky enough, is flooding once every hundred years an acceptable risk profile? Is it flooding once every thousand years? We have different ideas of where that, that risk is. And so what we have to do as a city is look and try and determine what's our appropriate risk profile, so that we can then design solutions to achieve that outcome. And the things that we are looking at in this is, what's the acceptable frequency of minor or nuisance flooding? It's been said a lot before that, you know, we don't mind our streets filling up with water once every 10 years, but if they fill up with water five times each year, I don't know if we've achieved our, our level of, of, of risk reduction. What's the acceptable frequency of major or structural flooding? And I define structural flooding as when water goes into someone's house. Is that, is that, that we don't want anybody to flood in a hundred-year event? Is it a 50-year event? Is it a 250-year event? Those are very tough questions, and it's about understanding risk. And it's also about asking about the susceptibility to different types of flooding. As I said before, we have different causes of flooding, and so we could improve our local storm sewers and do nothing to Braze Bayou, and you could be flooded by Braze Bayou. Or vice versa, we can invest in the bayou and be flooded by our, our local drainage system. And what's very important in this ultimately, is what can we afford? Infrastructure improvements in general can be very costly, and we have to be asking ourselves, do the benefits outweigh the costs? Are the costs of doing it monetarily to our taxpayers less than the benefits we achieve by reducing or avoiding flooding? And that's a question that we're going to need to look very closely on, to make sure that we're making a smart investment that achieves our goals at the least possible cost. And the last piece here that we look at this, is that we want to approach this through a holistic flood risk management framework, which really emphasizes the fact that we have different drivers of flooding and different types of infrastructure that we need to have a plan for. We need to understand how these contribute to our drainage system, and have a plan for making sure that over time, we can make the necessary improvements to these various systems, including our local drainage, our semi-regional drainage, our regional drainage, and also, very importantly, to our development standards, which is how we regulate development inside Bel Air. So, I did want to highlight very quickly, a lot has been going on since Hurricane Harvey over, over the past four or five years. Most importantly is the Project Braze project, and that's reflected in the number one on this chart. Project Braze is approximately a $500 million partnership between the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the Harris County Flood Control District, and it constructed large-scale detention basins, bridge raisings, channel improvements, all the various things that you've been seeing on Braze Bayou over the last few years. This is a tremendously important project and produces significant benefit to the city of Bel Air. Shown in the graphic below is what's known as the Conditional Letter of Map Revision, which, when we look at the floodplain map for Bel Air currently, 90-odd percent of Bel Air is in the hundred-year floodplain. Project Braze, based on the design standard it was done under, essentially removes almost all of that from the floodplain, meaning that only a small portion of the city would be inside the 100-year floodplain. That is a significant reduction in the risks that we face from flooding to the bayou. Tremendous project, it will be completing this summer, will be, will be the, the final full completion of Project Braze, and if there's one thing that will benefit the city of Bel Air, this is a tremendous accomplishment for our region. Part of our challenge is, though, is this does not eliminate the risk of Braze Bayou impacting our community. And this was designed for 13 inches of rainfall. We now know that there's a higher likelihood of having higher rainfall events, so there is always continued risk. Just because you're removed from the floodplain doesn't mean, mean you're removed from risk, it just means you have a lower risk than you would have had otherwise. And so, Braze Bayou continues to be a very important piece, but this is one very major step in the right direction. The second item here is another very important program being implemented by the Harris County Flood Control District and FEMA, which is the MAPNEX program, which is a remapping of all of the floodplains in Harris County, using the best available technology, the best available information, and our current understanding of rainfall and rainfall risk. Over the next year or so, FEMA and the Flood Control District will be rolling out new floodplain maps that look at both fluvial and pluvial flood risk, or urban and riverine flood risk, and will provide a much better assessment of the risks facing our community and every community in the county, moving forward. And the important part of understanding risks is that helps you to frame the actions you take to address those risks. So this is a very significant step forward in understanding our flood risks in the region. And then, number three is very important, because as Director Leach said, the city of Bel Air did complete its Master Drainage Concept Plan, which is not intended to be the definitive plan for what we are going to be doing, but it has informed a significantly more nuanced and detailed understanding of the challenges facing our city, and some of the potential solutions that could be implemented. And so this is a big step forward for Bel Air in getting our hands around this problem, and being ready to tackle it in the most appropriate manner. As I mentioned, in terms of moving forward with a goal-oriented approach to flood risk management, there's lots of different ways that we can manage our flood risk, and I can say that we have a current level of flood risk, and we can have a desired level of flood risk. And the question is, is how do you get from that point to your goal? And what we do know is that our current development standards of how we construct houses, how we manage commercial redevelopment, have the ability to reduce the risk of our community to flooding. And so, over the coming years, our development standards will slowly but surely reduce the at-risk number of structures in our community, and collectively, improve the performance of our community. What we also know is that we have additional opportunities, looking at our development standards, where we could take those further, and be able, through our development policies, to further buy down or reduce the risk that we may face in the future. We also know that we have a wide variety of regional flood risk reduction projects that are being completed by Harris County Flood Control District, the city of Houston, or others, that also are benefiting our community, and those are also, will over time, reduce the risk to our community. But as I mentioned, and this is the, reflected in the changing conditions piece, is that over the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years, we'll have some increases in flood risk that may take away some of those benefits. And ultimately, what we have, is we have a level of risk that is up to the city of Bel Air to tackle as we move forward. And that's what we're trying to do here, is trying to bracket what needs to be done by the city of Bel Air to get us to our desired level of flood risk. And so how are we doing that? This is the process that the city has been working on for the last few months, which is laying out an implementation plan for getting to action. What that starts with was flood risk management objectives, which we'll be talking about over the next few minutes. What that will lead to is the establishment of drainage design criteria, which, when projects are designed according to that criteria, over time, will achieve our flood risk management objectives. Based on that understanding of what that criteria is, we can develop and design flood risk reduction solutions, meaning specific projects that will achieve measurable benefit in reducing flood risk. And then, number four, once we understand the various solutions we have, we can put them together into a capital improvement plan, that is a collection of improvements that together will achieve our flood risk management goals, and then we can develop a long-term funding and delivery strategy, but how do we deliver these projects at the lowest possible cost to the city of Bel Air? What's very important here is that we are not intending to study, study, study. We are intending to create a strategic framework to move forward with, but our goal is to be able to, in the near term, meaning this year and next year, to be able to advance what we'll call the low-hanging fruit, which are obvious opportunities, whether they be partnership projects with the Flood Control District, with Tech Dot, or the city of Houston, or simple, single-purpose projects that make a lot of sense, that we can get started on chipping away at these problems, as long as those projects are in line with our long-term strategic objectives for the city as a whole. So this is the process that we've been trying to stand up and work through as we do this. As it relates to our specific objectives, what we have tried to do here is lay out our thoughts on these topics. So, first off, as a city, we recognize that there are multiple causes of flooding, and that through multifaceted efforts, we aim to reduce the frequency and severity of flood events which impact our community. And we do this because by reducing our flood risk, we provide greater physical and economic security for our residents, we increase the value of our homes and properties, and we enhance the appeal of our community. And as we move forward in setting our desired level of service, we have a little bit more work to go to be very specific about this, but our goals are very simple. It has been established that our number-one priority is to prevent, to the greatest degree reasonable, structural flooding, meaning flooding in houses in major storm events. Now, I'm not going to tell you today if that's a 50-year event, or 100-year event, or 200-year event, but our goal is to keep water out of people's houses. The second goal is to limit, to the greatest degree reasonable, excessive street flooding in minor storm events. We are not only impacted when water enters your house, you can be impacted by high levels in your streets that prevent emergency vehicles and so on from getting to you. But as we do this, and we talked about this, is that we recognize that in a flat, low-lying city with, in Bel Air, especially a city that can get 17 inches of rain falling out in one day, there will be water, there will be flood risk, and our question is, how do we manage those floodwaters safely, so that we can minimize the impacts along the way? And the last point here, as far as our objectives go, is that we really do aim to make sound financial decisions related to the investment in our infrastructure. That means that we are going to objectively assess the benefits and the costs of infrastructure investment, and aim to optimize that, so that we can maximize the return on investment, so we're not just spending money for the sake of spending money, we're spending money because it is delivering efficient benefits, moving forward. because it is delivering efficient benefits moving forward. Diving in a little bit deeper to that, a couple of things that we've been outlining here is the importance of development and floodplain regulations. The city of Bel Air, over the last few years, has been continuing to adopt stronger and stronger development regulations. That means, for example, when you construct a new house, you're required to construct it elevated above the floodplain, such that even if the floodplain envelops Bel Air, your house will be above it and not damaged. Over time, the non-structural controls, like floodplain regulations, are very effective at reducing the exposure of a community to flooding in a very cost-effective manner. So what we've laid out for ourselves is a series of actions to assess whether or not our development regulations are appropriate, if they could be stricter, how they can contribute to our overall approach. And this is very, very important. And I show here the number of structures which have flooded in, for example, Tropical Storm Allison and Hurricane Harvey. And we had almost 2,000 structures that flooded in Hurricane Harvey, and about 1,400 structures that flooded in Tropical Storm Allison. Very important here, when you divide the city of Bel Air up into four different quadrants, you can see that actually Tropical Storm Allison had the most flooded structures on the north side of town. Hurricane Harvey had the most structures flooded on the south side of town. There is nowhere in Bel Air that is safe from flooding. Everybody faces their own risks, depending on the type of rain event that we get. But what's very important about this is that when you look to the top part of this table, what it shows is that structures that were built between 2008 and present to our more stringent floodplain development standards only compromised 6% of all structures that have flooded, for example, in Hurricane Harvey. Our development controls, when we build structures to new standards, are very effective at preventing those houses from flooding moving forward. So this is a very important piece for us moving forward. What we also talked about was that, specific to our local drainage, the city of Bel Air, through its recent bond programs, has been reconstructing streets and drainage systems. And that's been part of a long-term strategy to reconstruct our original infrastructure systems. In general, infrastructure tends to last for approximately 50-odd years. That can be extended to 60, 70, or 80. But there is a lifespan on how long a street can go before it literally starts falling apart, or for a water line before it collapses on itself and starts leaking water everywhere. And so it's incumbent on all cities to basically be able to manage their infrastructure assets, which is their streets, drainage, and water and wastewater systems. And we approached that historically through what's known as an infrastructure renewal program, that basically says that we need to be constantly looking at our infrastructure and replacing failing infrastructure with new infrastructure as we move ahead. The effective implementation of that is kind of interesting, because technically speaking, that would imply that if your infrastructure lasts for 50 years, that you would need to reconstruct 2% of your infrastructure each year, and we aren't always working. But what it does say is that essentially, every decade, we need to be thinking about reconstructing approximately 10% of our infrastructure as it starts to move into disrepair. And so as part of that, what we hope to be doing is that as we're reconstructing our old streets, that we can put back in place the right drainage system that will provide the desired level of service and will connect into our other drainage improvements, providing a comprehensive system. And so what we've laid forth here is the idea that we need to develop a long-term street and drainage capital improvement plan that basically says, which streets do we anticipate reconstructing in the 2020s? Which streets in the 2030s? Which streets in the 2040s? But most importantly, it acknowledges the fact that our infrastructure does need to be reconstructed, and that in this reconstruction, we can also significantly improve drainage performance by putting back the appropriate drainage systems as we go. So we'll talk a little bit more about where this fits, but it's very important that we're focusing on this local drainage aspect. The next area of interest is the semi-regional drainage aspect, and this is our large north-south drainage systems. This is South Rice, this is Newcastle, and these are very, very important, because these are the systems that collect runoff from all of our local streets and carry that runoff down to Braze Bayou. If they are not working properly, our local streets don't work properly. It's an interconnected system. So it's very important that we understand what these systems need to be and that these systems perform, because they enable the rest of our drainage system to perform. Some of the challenges moving forward in this is that many of these systems are actually partially controlled by other entities, whether that be TechDOT and 610, whether that be the city of Houston, who has responsibilities for Chimney Rock, whether that be Harris County Flood Control District and Cypress Ditch, that these projects inherently require a collaborative approach, because they're jointly managed by multiple entities. And one of the other challenges that we face here is that these semi-regional projects are of the scale, that they are, these are the expensive portions of the project, they are the portions that will require partnership, and they are also the portions, as we had talked a little bit before about, that will require corresponding impact mitigation, meaning that if we want to discharge more water to Braze Bayou, we need to find a way to mitigate that impact. And traditionally, that's through the construction of a detention basin, either in Bel Air or on Braze Bayou, that can mitigate the impact of that additional water. So these are more challenging, more complicated to develop, because they require that partnership. But they're very, very important to our overall system. And so we have a framework here for making sure that as we do these projects, that we're planning for improvements to local drainage, that we're providing the appropriate-sized systems, that we're developing the mitigation necessary to allow these projects to be built, and that we're designing them to provide the desired level of protection we're looking for. And lastly, the regional drainage component. It is very hard for Bel Air, which is approximately 3.5 square miles, to influence the 128-square-mile Braze Bayou watershed. So the question is, is recognizing that we can't do a whole lot to change the water surface elevations on Braze Bayou, how can we contribute to this regional solution? And the first piece is Project Braze being completed. The second piece is continuing to advocate and work with our regional partners. There is more that the Harris County Flood Control District wants to do for Braze Bayou, and the city of Bel Air should be supportive of that. There's more that we can do, working with the city of Houston, for example, to prevent extreme-event sheet flow from other neighborhoods from flowing into Bel Air and worsening our problems. There's a lot that we can do in partnership with our other entities to help to find solutions that can be done by others for Braze Bayou and to achieve benefit for the city of Bel Air. And the last piece, I'll say here, and this is a bit of a regional piece, is most important, flood insurance is a very, very good last resort. There is always a flood event that will flood you. For example, in Hurricane Harvey, some areas got 55 inches of rain, I think it was. You can't design against that, you can't protect against that, but flood insurance can help you to recover if that event happens. And so flood insurance is a very important piece to our risk management approach. So this kind of takes us back to our plan here, is that we've been developing these objectives of what we're trying to achieve, we're translating those into drainage criteria, we want to be moving next into defining the specific solutions that we can implement to achieve those, and then putting together the funding and phasing plan to be able to do this in the most effective manner. So how do we do that? There's a couple of different things that we're looking at here. Number one, there's certain things that are no cost or low cost. Those specifically include development and floodplain regulation, flood insurance advocacy, regional advocacy, these are all things that contribute to reducing our risk profile. The second piece is the infrastructure renewal related to local streets and drainage. Typically speaking, this has been implemented through traditional bond funding, and these projects are typically inherently the responsibility of Bel Air. There's no other entity that's responsible for the street in front of your house than the city of Bel Air. And so by looking at those local streets through an infrastructure renewal framework, we can find a logical way to try and group infrastructure improvements in a cost-effective manner. And then the third piece is the special projects. Those are the semi-regional drainage improvement projects that have the opportunity for partnerships with others, that have a much better chance of securing grant funding or other special financing considerations, because they're much more impactful on the overall performance of the system. And so the question for these projects, and this is really the purpose of our strategic planning exercise, is how can we implement these game-changing projects at the lowest cost to Bel Air taxpayers? In order to do that, we need to be packaging up integrated solutions into high-performing groupings or various different arrangements of projects that we can submit to other entities for grant funding and partnership. A lot of these programs want you to quantify the benefits, to be able to convey that you're doing a beneficial project in a cost-effective manner, and we need the engineering backup and information that will allow our applications to be well-received and hopefully to achieve the goal of securing outside funding. So as we do this, we have kind of a dual goal, which is, these are complicated projects, they require lots of partnership, lots of development, they're going to be eligible for certain varieties of grant funding, and so it's incumbent on us to develop a plan that allows us to proceed towards a strategic goal while still developing and implementing small projects along the way that allow us to keep incrementally working towards those goals. So some examples of that, things that we've been working on is Harris County Flood Control District, opportunities there for improvements to Cypress Ditch, working with TechDOT on improvements for Loop 610, working with the city of Houston on neighborhood drainage or sheet flow, working with Harris County Flood Control and the city of Houston for regional impact mitigation facilities that would allow for local drainage improvements to proceed ahead. And as we look at how we might be able to leverage outside funding opportunities, grants are a very big piece. After Hurricane Harvey, there have been a number of things that have become available that weren't available previously. One component that is important is the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, or ARPA, actually provided the city of Bel Air with funding, which we could use to spend or advance drainage improvement projects. The Texas Water Development Board Flood Infrastructure Fund is a newly-created, state-funded grant program that allows municipalities to submit flood risk management projects to the state for potential state funding. That's something that Director Leach and I have been working on to make sure that city of Bel Air's projects are included in the San Jacinto Regional Flood Plan, which would make them positioned to be able to apply for funding from the state of Texas, and then working our way through various other grants that may become available to help us in moving through these projects. But these are the various things that the city is looking at and trying to develop as we look at these projects. So in the last two slides, and I do apologize for running on a little bit here, but the things that we have been working on as city council and city staff is to establish consensus objectives for flood risk management, to try and get to our understanding of what our acceptable risk profile is, and we're not quite there yet, because we don't have a full picture of what it would cost to achieve that risk profile, but it's an iterative process. We next need to translate that into design criteria that could be employed for specific projects. We need to develop those projects beyond the concept level into the preliminary engineering and final design level, so that we can have a set of solutions that, if implemented in total, can achieve our objectives. And then we need to figure out how to optimize the phasing and delivery of those solutions, meaning how do we deliver benefits in a timely manner, in the areas of greatest need first, for example? How do we deliver those in the most cost-effective manner? How you package them, how you integrate them can have a big piece of how cost-effective they are, and how can we develop them in a way that maximizes our chance for getting outside funding support moving forward? But what's very important through all of this is that infrastructure is a 50- or 75-year investment, and so when you build a storm sewer, you're relying on it to serve your community for 50 or 75 years. And so you need to be thinking about the future and how it will be performing in the future. But just because this challenge is long-term doesn't mean that we have any reason to delay acting quickly on things that are in front of us today, that have an opportunity to move forward quickly, and that's one of our big areas of focus. So as we've been aligning the city for action, city staff has been working with their consultants to finalize the master drainage concept plan, which Director Leach said was finished last month. We've been holding these workshops to develop the objectives. We're here today to collect more information from our residents to understand how you see this program and what priorities you'd like to make sure are included. Moving forward from there, we'll be engaging assistance from the engineering community as a flood technical advisor to really start moving portions of these concepts forward into the development phase. It has been five years almost since Hurricane Harvey, and we're ready to take action. And that's the goal of our next series of steps. And I guess my last slide here, and this is the key thing about, well, what are we actually going to be able to do? And this is kind of our action plan right now, is that over the next year or two, we have the opportunity to continue to refine our flood damage prevention ordinance, our development regulations, and that'll be a priority for our council. We also have some available funding through ARPA to move forward with additional planning and design activities of getting our projects ready to either be constructed or to be submitted for grant applications. And we have remaining bond authority to fund or construct an initial project or a set of smaller projects that would constitute the low-hanging fruit of things that we're ready to move on today as a first step in this process. But what's very important as we do this is this process is inherently controlled by the residents of Bel Air and by the city council. Ultimately, we will have to come back to the residents and the voters for their approval of any additional bond funding, and that's very important, because it establishes an appropriate and warranted go-no-go checkpoint for the major activities that are ahead of us. So there's some things that we can do with the available funding we have and the authority we have right now, but the big, heavy lift will be up to our residents to approve and support moving forward. So very important to note that our residents will have the final say on the size, the scale, and the pace of these important investments in our community, and that will occur through subsequent steps as we position and develop projects, as we bring them forward to the residents as part of a bond program, and give our residents a chance to decide if it's the appropriate size, scale, and pace of activities for our community. So with that, I'll wrap up this discussion, and I'm very excited to hear from everybody to help to better understand what keeps you guys up at night and what you think we should be focusing on would be very important. So with that, I just appreciate the chance to present, and we look forward to hearing what you guys have to say.
Well, lots of good and very detailed information in the presentation. 20 minutes, give or take 20 minutes. But thank you, Councilmember Gordon, and also Mike for introducing this subject. Appropriate to have ended on the slide concerning, you know, resident involvement in the process, because that's where we've arrived in this town hall meeting, as we'll now receive public comment on the presentation. As noted earlier, this might include questions from the public, the council can then refer to staff as appropriate. Hopefully, it's already clear, but just to avoid any confusion, this is an opportunity for public comment only on the subject of this town hall meeting, as we will receive general public comment on other topics during the regular meeting immediately following. As was stated earlier, those wishing to speak will please turn in one of these blue sign-up forms if you haven't already. Time limit for speakers is five minutes with no extension. With notice, after four minutes, you've got one minute remaining. The first speaker we have signed up is James Ong, who will be followed by Maureen Gilbert.
Good evening, councilmembers. I want to appear, I'm here primarily to propose a change in our direction or our focus. Next slide, please. Let's get an understanding about urban street flooding. The true cause is our upstream development. There's more impervious surfaces, there's increased storm water runoff, and current practice is a drain, and that basically just passes the problem down to others downstream. Local area development, same issue, basically. Limited downstream capacity, typically in a downstream sewer or local bayou, and basically, this incremental storm water increases creates a gradual creep, which I'm sure we've heard of before. Next slide. So let's look at the street drainage system. I've shown there are two houses, and basically, the blue there shows an existing system here, and the yellow or gold shows the proposed new MDCP tunnel, basically. And notice where all the red Xs are. Those are potential bottlenecks or blockages or choke points, basically, and where they can prevent storm water from getting to their intended source here. Next slide. So what do we do when we build a new street to mitigate flooding? We lower the street level one foot. Only the local sewer may be upgraded in size, but there's no upgrade in the downstream sewer, which means that can be a bottleneck. And that's happened, I've talked to a resident, and that's basically what they said happened, basically. She knows that, oh, the street's doing some good. She knows that, oh, the street's doing some good because it floods to the curb, it doesn't flood a yard or up or yard anymore basically, but that's because the street has been lowered a foot. And upon backup, only the extra stormwater detention in the street prevents any home flooding, any house flooding. So basically, it's the extra detention that provides you the only effective flood prevention technique when there's a downstream bottleneck. Next slide. So here is the MDCP shortcomings. It's not a long-term solution. It merely passes the disposal problem to downstream neighbors. It continues the policy of major reliance upon drainage. In the past, drainage was cheap, easy to do. This shows it's no longer true anymore. It's dependent upon all existing sewer lines not being a bottleneck, and it's dependent upon the final destination, Braze Bayou must have capacity, otherwise it's pretty much useless. I'm glad to hear that Braze Bayou will be expanded, but that doesn't solve the upstream sewer line problems. There's other COB disadvantages. Construction, you're talking about prolonged heavy traffic congestion down the major north-south through fairs. There's no city of use and policy change. It basically brings more floodwater faster to City of Bel Air, so there's actually increased possibility of flooding in case of a bayou backup or some sort of downstream blockage. And it's just very expensive. You consider the maintenance, you've got a 10- to 25-foot diameter conduit, 75-deep, 75-deep beneath the surface, that's basically having a subway in our area that has to be maintained and by the city basically after it's already been built. Next slide. So what's the cost-effective return of? Basically, there's, basically, we've brought out the fact that detention is a thing that saved our bacon basically when there's a downstream blockage, and here I've presented the options and shown a cost per each acre foot of detention, and you can see that there's one option that's 15 times less expensive than a new street and 20 or 30 times less expensive than the MDCP project. And detention offers the only known effective flood mitigation if the downstream is flooded, and if all the people in the watershed practice detention, there wouldn't be any need for huge and expensive drains. The collected water is best recycled toward lawns, gardens, but it can also be released slowly to sewers when the sewers have capacity. Next slide, please. So the recommended path forward, I think, is to emulate nature. What happens in this area that we live in is that land floods and then it slowly drains. So we basically need to do the same basically. Our primary focus should be stormwater detention and then recycling that water. Increase in stormwater is incremental, and so, I mean, our solutions would be incremental, and there should be continuous mitigation basically. And again, as we've heard before, you need a holistic overview. You need to, there should be some brainstorming, some technique called value engineering where you go through here. The larger properties should be included. That means like the SLS, the Exchevron property, there were several opportunities there that were missed for extra detention. They even offer that, they show that in their drawings, their extra detention. I don't believe those were ever taken up, they were ever taken up on that. So obviously, they just met the minimum requirements for detention basically, and so those opportunities were lost. For instance, they had a park that could have been easily lowered to get extra detention, but there was nothing done about that. I'm pretty sure the state is level. The existing homes and infrastructure, existing COB residents need to be included. There's a lady in southwest City of Bel Air, she, on her own practices, for one minute?
No, sir. I held a sign up on that, I think you saw me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you for one minute. Okay, all right, fine, all right. So, okay, fine, all right, thank you then.
So before you leave, Ms. Strong, we do have the printed presentation?
Yes, you do have the printed presentation.
And how many more slides were there?
There's just, there's the last slide.
We're good?
Okay. So, all right, can I finish it, or you want me to?
Well, just if you want to not spend time going through, but just...
But basically, I'm saying, how does North City of Bel Air help South City of Bel Air lower elevation during a rainstorm? Do they build a big drain and bring the stormwater down there faster to them? I don't believe that solution. What they need to do is hold the water back, basically detain the water so it doesn't flood South City of Bel Air as fast. Thank you.
Glad to wrap up on that thought. Next speaker is Maureen Gilbert, who will be followed by John Gabriel.
I live on T Street, and I attended the task force meeting end of September last year. Well, one comment actually, from Ross's last end-of-year presentation, he talked about bonds and getting City of Bel Air approval. It seems like we already had bonds in 2016 and whatever, and that was quite a huge issue in the election a couple of elections ago, so I wonder how people will recognize if they've got bonds again and that they've approved them, et cetera. Just a side comment. Anyways, back to my topic. The flood hazard task force meeting in September of, 28th September of 21 gave the results of the study effort that was a multi-party study and participated by Bel Air, and there was an engineering consultant involved there. During that meeting, in the public comments there, Charles Gulfworth, the president of the Braze Bayou Association, pointed out that there was an alternate case for evaluation of the flow to the Cypress Ditch and being a reuse of an historical connection at South Rice at Beechnut, which was a diversion directly into Braze Bayou. That was changed in the early 90s when there was flooding in Bel Air, and he was suggesting that that be reinstated to try and unload the Cypress Ditch. At that time, that was not included in the study, and I asked the city engineer and the consulting engineers outside the meeting afterwards if they were going to add that to the study or make mention of that as a potential follow-up, and they said, nope, they weren't really kind of focused on that. So I wanted to know what was the outcome of this, and is that being considered? Now, this goes to the regional or semi-regional participation because that's outside the City of Bel Air, but it does greatly affect us taking north to south flow down South Rice directly to Braze Wood to Braze Bayou and offloading the Cypress Ditch for the flow that's going to come in there anyways. Maybe you can comment on that.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. When we get to councilmember question. John Gabriel will be followed by Jim Burrow.
John Gabriel, I've been at 114 Marrakesh Court for about 30 years. First, I thank you for your service sincerely, and I thank you for your work initiatives on flood risk management. All of us agree, there's nothing more important than the City of Bel Air. I'm here to call for the urgent need to enforce Bel Air's existing flood ordinance. Our flood ordinance is not difficult to understand, and it's not difficult to comply with, but it does need to be enforced. 21 months ago, I started notifying the city with photographs of very obvious violations to our flood ordinance. I'm not counting a couple inches. You could see these violations from the street. In August 20, a continuous grade beam was poured solid concrete to 17 inches above natural grade with no openings for flood vents. Then the entire footprint of the house was backfilled with soil and gravel. It was measured 17 inches above natural grade. In October 20, the concrete block wall was built on top of the concrete grade beam, still no fill removed. November 20, first floor framing started on top of the concrete block perimeter wall, and still no fill was removed. October 21, added fill in the backyard well above the eight-inch limit. December 21, the house was built, 12 inches of fill measured around the perimeter of the house. In March 21, finally something was done. A few holes were drilled in the grade beam, presumably to allow the floodwater to flow beneath the house. And guess what? That's what you saw at the end of the bore through the concrete grade beam. It's a solid block of dirt. Yes, that proved my point. The added fill beneath the house is higher than the holes that were drilled in the grade beam. Those holes accomplished absolutely nothing. Repeatedly emails over the course of 21 months. It's gotten some traction. Many of you have shown some interest, but today, May 16, 22, 21 months after our first no-fa the city of these egregious violations, nothing has been done. The ordinance specifies no net increase in fill. Councilman Ross's April 5 presentation highlighted no net increase in volume of material in the lot is allowed, preventing the filling of the floodplain. He used the bathtub analogy, drop something heavy in it, and the water is displaced, it has to go somewhere. This property next to me has 4,200 cubic feet of fill added on the site. That's 31,000 gallons of floodwater displaced onto my property and onto yours. It's got to go somewhere, and this builder has made darn sure it will never go beneath his house. Further, the builder's cut-and-fill calculation shows zero cubic feet of fill in the front yard. I just showed you photographs of 12 inches of fill at the front of the house. You don't have to be an engineer to know that zero cubic feet of fill in the front yard is wrong. This is a specific problem, but it's also a systemic problem in the city. No one is checking the height of flood vents, not the city engineer, not the city inspectors, not anyone. No one is checking the volume of fill added beneath the house. The city engineer is not checking calculations for total fill added on the entire site. They're only checking part of it, the perimeter yards. The ordinance defines grade as the natural elevation of the ground surface prior to construction. However, the city and the city engineer are interpreting the definition of grade as final grade after construction. This does matter. It's the point from which the height of the flood vents is measured. 112 Marrakesh Court is all built now. Yes, it's built with flood vents 17 inches above natural grade, where the maximum height is four inches. Hurricane Harvey did not even get 17 inches above grade on Marrakesh Court. It's built with 4,200 cubic feet of fill on the property that displaces 31,000 gallons of floodwater. 112 Marrakesh Court is built with cut-and-fill calculations that are clearly bogus. You don't have to be an engineer to know that, and this is not the only example in the city. In March of 22, the new owners moved in. To this day, no one at the city can even tell me if they've received a certificate of occupancy or a temporary certificate of occupancy. Seems like a simple question to me. So I conclude where I started. I do applaud you for your renewed focus on flood mitigation planning, but I urge you to start by enforcing our existing flood ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabriel. Jim Burrow will be followed by Dan Sebastian.
Well, I too want to commend everybody, the city and everybody else that had a lot to do with bringing us to where we are tonight. One of the most interesting things about flood protection is that it gets down to a personal level. The question is, what can I do while I'm waiting for what everybody else is going to do to minimize my effects? Now, I've been in my house for 49 years. It's not likely that I'm going to be able to raise the house. I have intentions of not being in Bel Air a whole lot longer. But I want to know, let me just tell you a short story, and our little experience with Hurricane Allison, Tropical Storm Allison. I worked in the Texas Medical Center, and we at Methodist Hospital had over $3 billion worth of damage due to flooding. Our response to that was to know exactly why the flooding happened. We could tell that the street provided water to our basement parking garages that provided water to everywhere else. So the obvious question is, what do you do about that? Well, what we did about that was to put 17-ton flood doors at all of those entrances. The Texas Medical Center has not had a flooded basement since all of that was installed. The irony is that most of those doors were in place, but we were waiting, again, it's one of these supply chain issues, we were waiting for the gaskets for the doors. Okay, so $3 billion worth of damage. So the question becomes, what do you do on a temporary basis? Well, we found a number of products that were available that we could put in front of those entrances and keep the water out. I'd like to do that at my own house, but I was told that I couldn't do that. And the reason I can't do that is that the water that's not going into my house is going out to my neighbors. So I hired an engineer, a good friend, didn't charge very much, and he did the calculations. And he found that in protecting my, say, 1,500 square feet of house, that the level of water would raise exactly 3/100ths of an inch. So my question to the city was, if you can measure it, find me, but I'm going to spend $20,000 for a flood protection berm around my house that I can inflate with water, and it will be held in place. Well, we dismissed that idea because we found that there really were some teeth in these rules. So anyway, one of the things that I would like you to consider is an education program so that people can minimize any damage that they might have. I know what I would do, and I've taken all those measures after Harvey so that I stand not to lose very much if I flood again, certainly not my furniture. But I think an education program or an education component would be extremely helpful, and then maybe a real good look at the idea of how people can protect their own facility in the short term until the long-term stuff is in place. Thank you very much, and I commend you again on the really quality job you guys have done.
Thank you, Mr. Burrow. Dan Sebastian will be followed by Joe Tidor.
As pointed out, I'm Dan Sebastian. I live at 5209 Jassamine Street. I lived in this city for 47 years, I think. I've kind of forgotten when I moved in, but I think that was the time. Now, we talked about, I'm going to talk a little lighter, you know, about flooding. I would like my street to flood about nine inches deep once a week so I could train my dogs. Now, it won't get in my house, you know, I'm definitely nine inches deep in the street. That's running water, perfect for training retrievers. So just consider that. Now, back to a more serious point. At least y'all understand that. As I look on the front row, there's only one person, two, Tracy, two, sitting up there that probably I spoke to post-Harvey about some of the projects that were being proposed to prevent flooding, and one of them was the flap check gate valve, which, I don't know how, but it somehow, after many memos and everything, it finally got canceled. At least I think it's got canceled, because I hadn't heard it'd been put in, but a lot of money was spent on engineering and probably procuring materials for that. And the reason I point this out, a bad project is worse than no project, because you've spent a lot of money, you've raised taxes, and you accomplished nothing. The flap check valve project was one of those bad projects, and you have to have good people, creative people, designing good projects for flood control because it's not easy. And I hadn't seen this city bring onboard that caliber of people that I got confidence in that would develop a project that would help the flooding and really solve the solution. I've heard about these tunnels. Now, how many people know what velocity needs to scour so silt doesn't settle out in a sewer line? Write it on your paper if you think you know. You're an engineer, you probably should know. Well, it's about three feet a second, and if you dig a bunch of tunnels in there to drain stuff in its very low velocity, it's going to silt up. going to silt up, and how are you going to clean them out? I keep hearing about these tunnels and tunnels for detention. I'm not sure what y'all are going to do, really. I mean, but if you dig a tunnel, I'm going to be working to recall a few people, because that's a total useless project, and long-term, it'll fill up with silt and won't work. Now, there is some solutions that I've suggested. One is, it might have some merits, is burying a pipeline in the middle of Brae's. Now, that would take a community effort, because you've got to go through other areas, and then pump water in there. You could pump considerably more water on a pump pipe than you can gravity flow through a ditch. So basically, you could move more, because you either move more water out of Bel Air or you detain it. So you could move more water out during the flood thing and pump it all the way to the bay with a buried pipeline in the center, two on the sides, and hook these pumps and pump water out, and that allows you to get more water out of Bel Air. Now, I've talked about pumping it up into canals and taking it south to detention where land's cheap, but I don't know, everybody keeps saying, well, the center point wouldn't let us use that for right away, but I got a feeling if there was enough pressure put on them, they would be reluctant. Now, I'm serious about this. Mr. Poppy, if y'all don't know him, Russ Poppy was executive for Harris County, and I resent six of the suggestions for improving flooding on Brae's, and he wrote me back a really stupid answer. Well, Mr. Poppy is no longer executive director of Harris County Flood Control. It took me a few memos, but I don't know whether my memos got him dismissed, but he's not there. So I take this flooding serious. And now, I would suggest that as a minimum, you have the project vetted by some of the people at Speed, at Rice, and send over a proposed, what are you going to do for prevent flood, even probably get the Dutch. I bet they would volunteer review it and send comments back. Some real competent people that know how to solve flooding, because the city engineer we've had and the consultants has proven they're not capable of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sebastian. Next speaker signed up is Joe Tidor, who will be followed by Gary Brush.
My name is Joe Tidor. I live at the 5200 block of Willow. And Dan, you have been living here for 47 years, and your 20-minute talk, it went a lot longer. Okay, I just have a couple, I've watched all the workshops you had, and I just had a couple of questions. And one last, two weeks ago, there was an exchange between Nathan and Ross, and they were talking about consultants, and Ross said he had a consultant. So I'd like to know who that was. You don't have to tell me in an open meeting if you don't want to, but, oh, well, you said you had one. Yeah, I watched the video. And then I had another question, let's see what it was. Oh, it's basically around, you know, Hotsi asked you in that last meeting, were you, you know, on the trunk lines, were you going to do any tunnels? And you said you hadn't decided yet. But, you know, in your presentation, you did say on that one thing that there may be some deep water tunnels for storage. And, you know, as an engineer with three and a half decades of hydrology, that's where I get, you know, there is a problem there. I mean, you've got detention, which, if you can't, if they can't tell you, if Harris County can't tell you how much water you can put in there, I don't know how you can size it. I, you know, you could come up here and size, you know, any trunk lines, any sewers you want, but if you don't have a place to put it, you know, you have this asset that you've spent a lot of money for. So, you know, I don't see how you're, I mean, if that's at work, and they said, you know, design something to pump this much water, and we don't know where it's going, I wouldn't take the project. I'd say that's, I don't see how you're going to do that. I mean, you could put in some big trunk lines, you could put tunnels for detention, all that, and, you know, but if they won't let you put it in the bayou, I don't know the law about the bayous. If you don't have detention, can you buy detention credits elsewhere? I don't know if you can or not, but, you know, that really doesn't solve the problem of, you know, flooding on our bayou if you can. Now, I'm kind of a advocate of tunnels. I was reading about in Dallas on Mills Creek, there's a Mills Creek Tunnel Project, $6 billion, I think it's a $6 billion project. And basically, they've got a five-mile tunnel that starts at 32 feet in diameter and goes up to 40. And basically, they're going to use that tunnel as detention, and then at the end they have a big building where they have some, you know, pumps, they're going to, they're basically going to empty it with, you know, some high-flow, low-head pumps, and then they also have the ability to go down and go back and clean the tunnels out. So, I mean, I could see that, actually. At first, I was against it, because, you know, the first study came out, and we said we weren't going to do tunnels. But I could see that regionally, if you wanted to do that here. I don't know how you would fund it, but, you know, because I don't know where you're going to get detention. The city doesn't really have detention that's worth anything. So, you know, I disagree with Sebastian. We have this argument all the time. I'm kind of for tunnels. But then, you know, it kind of led, after I saw that Dallas project, I said, gosh, they could do the same thing on Brae's Bayou. They could dig under there, come up, you know, at the Ship Channel and pump it out there. It's a lot of money, but, you know, there's a lot of federal money floating around. So I, those are just, I'm just kind of talking off the cuff after what I heard, but I'm really interested in, you know, reconciling the flow you want to put in there when you don't have it. And I, you know, that's probably the biggest problem. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tidor. The last speaker we've got signed up so far is Gary Brush. So anyone else present wishing to speak in this town hall meeting will welcome your comments, following those of Mr. Brush.
Hello, yes, Gary Brush, resident of Bel Air, 4814 Spreu Street. Again, thank you all for all the work that you've done already. I'd like to, as was noted earlier, Charles Goforth of the Brae's Bio Association had also noted that a number of years back, that the north-to-south flow along Chimney Rock had been diverted to Cypress Ditch to reduce flooding in Meyerland. Well, of course, that essentially moved Meyerland's problem to become Bel Air's flooding problem. Now, with the points that have been made earlier about the project Brae's and all the work that's been done there, and it's essentially coming to completion, I would recommend that we would essentially work with, obviously, Harris County, as you guys have noted, to essentially remove or terminate that diversion of the flow such that it was causing a load on Cypress Ditch, which is critical to Bel Air and its conveyance of water to the bio, and simply allow that north-to-south flow on Chimney Rock to, once again, go directly to the bio rather than putting an additional water load on Cypress Ditch. I would think that in terms of any costs of expanding Cypress Ditch and expanding the capability, and perhaps water retention capability, of moving that water back to directly to the bio, I think that'd be a lot more cost-effective and would certainly take the load off of Cypress Ditch, which is, again, critical to Bel Air. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brush. Is there anyone else present wishing to speak in this town hall meeting? I see no further speakers. I'll acknowledge a couple of written comments we've received in connection with this town hall meeting, both of which are logged in the packet, so thank you for that, Tracy. One from Christine Ankeny, who offers her perspective that the problem to be solved is one of structure flooding. Specifically, she was responding to the question that Mike raised at the outset of the presentation, what level of service are we striving to achieve? And then the second written comment is from Dr. Robin Fleschler, who observes that debris from trees and yards potentially impeding the flow of water should also be addressed as a contributing factor to flooding. As always, complete copies of written comments are distributed to members of City Council, and in this instance, were included in the packet, and they will also be in the record of the meeting. So having received public comment, including some questions, Council will open the floor for questions from mayor and council. Councilmember Hotsi.
I was just, I was interested, I was wondering if I can ask Christian a question about the proposal of possibly having a little dam around your house and the three thousandths of an inch that it would be, but that's not a Bel Air rule, and that's maybe not a state of Texas rule. That's probably a federal flood rule and nothing within our ability to change that rule. Is that correct?
No, sir, I believe that's incorrect. I would posit that if you protect any structure, you flood-proof, you provide compensatory mitigation. So I don't know about the numbers. I don't know if it's Mr. Gabriel's 31,000 cubic feet or square feet of water, or if it's such a negligible amount of an inch of rise. I don't know. But commercial properties, when they flood-proof, they provide compensatory mitigation. So I'm looking at this, if everyone were to protect their own home, those who weren't protecting their home would be that much worse off.
So if he were to dig a nice lake property or ditch behind his house that was of a certain depth, then he potentially could have, could buy that $20,000 dam and be okay?
If it's an avenue allowed by Section 9-70.18 and those sections.
Well, he's got hope then. That's good.
It might take some modifications, some text changes. We can look into that as well.
Thank you, Christian.
A couple of comments. And Mr. Burrows, I think your example of the Med Center was actually a very good example. And the Med Center, in response to Tropical Storm Allison, was very proactive on multiple fronts, and the Med Center institutions were tremendous in their ability to take on floodproofing activities. But those were actually done in companion with efforts by the city of Houston to construct Greenbrier, Kirby, and Sunset, I think, or the third, was it Third Street? Kirby, Sunset, yeah. There were three large semi-regional drainage systems which were built to basically get water safely through the Med Center. And so the combination of regional, semi-regional drainage improvements and floodproofing has proven to protect the Med Center very adequately moving forward. And that's a very similar analogy here to adopting good development standards, getting your houses in a safe situation, and providing requisite conveyance, and together, those things can form a very protective system. And that's been what the Med Center did, and it's proved to be very effective over the last few years.
Councilmember Lewis?
I had several questions, but in response to the audience presentations, what can we do or what are we doing at 112 Marrakesh? Or if this is another backroom discussion, I understand.
Actually, I was going to ask a similar question framed thusly, and it was to invite Christian, if you, beyond just the House of Marrakesh, there have been extensive discussions whether and how we address them, I'll leave to you and the city attorney, but as a general matter throughout the city, Mr. Gabriel's given us an example of, and has expressed concern. I wrote down, "No one is checking," was his phrase. So I would invite you as building official, if you care to comment on that, irrespective of what may have happened in that instance, what's going on in that instance, just what are we doing to do a better job moving forward? Because I think it has been acknowledged in this instance, there's an issue over there.
Plan reviews, we call out the fact that flood vents, if you don't drop the grade beams as you move your way forward, they're going to end up more than four inches above highest adjacent grade, or above adjacent grade at that particular location. Perhaps I shouldn't use the term highest adjacent grade, because we want to think about the grade adjacent to each flood vent.
So when you say plan review, that sounds to me like a tabletop as opposed to physical eyeballs at the property as it's being constructed.
Once, once the project is modified and the revisions are approved, then the inspectors are to consult the plans, but they don't always. Most of the, tomorrow we have 52 inspections. Our in-house inspector, Mr. Gutierrez, has 18 of those inspections. If I get a third-party consulting inspector who's a replacement or who's coming here to buttress the needs for tomorrow's inspections, I've had them miss a flood vent 14 inches above adjacent grade. They really seem to have difficulties with Chapter 3 of the International Residential Code and Appendix G of the International Building Code and FEMA's construction standards, and it's part of the code, it's part and parcel of the code. For the term holistic tonight, it's, it's all holistic, it all meshes. What I'll be moving to do is to have an elevation certificate in the future verified, rather than just receiving it and receiving the final paperwork, but all that verified before you get, say, a TCO. Maybe we'll adopt a need for landscaping bonds, or a bond or something, a letter of credit. If those flood vents are not correct, then we'll fix it. I'm not sure what the answer is, except for training, but my time spent training should not be training our own third-party consultants.
And Councilmember Lewis, if I can, one more follow-up question before we return to you, because I kind of interjected there, but what was it, don't hold me to it, six weeks ago, I think? Part of what we're doing, at least from our side of the dais, is trying to ensure we have not just the third-party team that you've got, and we appreciate what they do, but we might be able to do an even better job moving forward with our own in-house folks.
Yes, sir.
So that sounds consistent with this discussion, so begging your forgiveness, Councilmember Lewis. Hopefully, my kind of reframing of a question I had as well, but others, if you want to proceed or...
Would you like me to speak to 112?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Let me talk about my successes before we go with 112. So, had a house on Laurel, flood vents about 14 inches up in the air. They've been lowered now. They had a CMU stem wall, relatively straightforward, so that was missed by a third-party inspector. I've got a house at 4626 Pine Street and 4627 Brayburn on their second or third builder. Finally have plans in that show compliance with the flood vents. The drainage plans, I believe, were approved for the latter two, but in connection with the final elevation certificate, it doesn't, shows non-compliance, and to me, the drainage is disapproved, as well as the final elevation certificate. For 112 Marrakesh, we've got another iteration from the engineer of record. I think that was provided two weeks ago. I think ARC was holding off until perhaps we could have a site meeting that fell through on Friday. I just need the, James, we need to get the review and over to me. I, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a numbers guy. I feel like more than eight inches was brought into the rear, but the spot elevations don't appear to have vents same, but I trust the surveyor. I've seen his name, he's always done good work. I'm looking to James and ARC to explain to me what it is I'm not seeing, what it is I'm not understanding. I think, last time I checked, the crawl space had additional fill removed so that the holes would take in some water. As to the number of holes that would be required to do that, probably sufficient, but there is no hard and fast number. One square inch per square foot of area contained is to equalize loads on both sides of a structure. That's the intent of a flood vent. So, in sum, hoping that this week, we have an answer for Mr. Gabriel.
So can I jump in there and follow that up? Thanks. Look, there's like 3,000 square feet of fill under that house that needs to be removed. I mean, have they taken out floor to remove it, or have they taken out curtains to remove it? And if they haven't...
They've removed from the rear. I'm not a numbers guy.
No, 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 no.
I don't know if there's 3,000 whatever underneath there. I would have to rely on ARC, but we don't get spot elevations.
My question is, the fill under the house, has any of that been removed?
At the rear patio, yes.
Okay, but it, but look, the picture is clear, it's all over the entire house.
Those pictures were from earlier.
Yes, they are, but my point is, is if, you know, if it was never removed...
It was removed from the rear patio area since then.
Okay.
This year.
And so did they go in and remove it from the entire house, or just the... And, and so did they go in and remove it from the entire house, or just the rear of the house?
I told them that I believed, though I didn't have spot elevations, that in the crawl space proper, under the house-conditioned habitable space proper, that they only needed to have enough fill to achieve one percent toward the inlets that are within the crawl space to accept water, and I believe they introduced more fill. The engineer has not answered me.
I'm not sure we're on the same page here.
I don't think we are.
But my point is, there shouldn't be any fill that was introduced into the house, and if it was, it should have been removed. What am I missing?
You can introduce fill...
Under the house?
If you, yes, to facilitate drainage toward the inlets under the house of one percent, as long as you're within the fill credit table.
One percent of what?
Slope.
So you could, so if the house was not sloped toward the, whatever, for the exterior, you could put in, but the point is, there was like seventeen inches. Obviously, that's way over one percent.
At, at the rear.
No, 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 my point is, that's throughout the entire house.
I think in all my memos, my supposition was that it was about twelve inches introduced, not eight. But the spot elevations, again, don't evince that.
Which is more than one percent.
You don't get more, you don't even get six inches if you only needed four to achieve one percent. That's what we may have been missing in the past, but I am not sure. Not a numbers guy, not the engineer, really need James and ARC to educate me on where they're coming from.
By the way, I don't believe you're not a numbers guy.
Well, I, I, look, I, I'm, I'm highly skeptical, after seeing those pictures, that they removed any significant amount of fill. And without, but, and again, I guess the, what I would ask is, if in fact they did, that we'd be brought up to date, I mean, and actually, not only us, but, you know, we have a neighbor who pointed this out, he ought to be able to see, hey, this has been fixed.
I agree.
So, and look, I'm not trying to make your life more difficult, trying to make the builder's life more difficult, who does things that are, that, quite seriously, we have a lot of good builders, you can't have some rogue builder who says, I'm going to ignore the rules and just do it how I want to do it. And it's, and this is, and if I'm, tell me if I'm wrong, Alan, this is not something we can waive. We can necessarily waive, I mean, we could waive, but just because we missed it not before your time, doesn't mean we've waived it. We can enforce this, even if it means suing them and tearing it down the house. Am I right, Alan?
Right.
So it sounds like, Christian, you, you've mentioned a couple of times, you're waiting on more data, you're waiting on the engineers. So maybe for purposes of the town hall, we leave it at that. I mean, I think the question is about the broader question of, you know, flood risk management. It's germane to that subject, but maybe it lends itself to a follow-on discussion. Councilmember Whit?
Just a, a general question, because I know we've, the, the conversation about flood, the fill calculation's come up before. Am I incorrect in that one point, you were talking to, on a bigger level, of changing what that calculation is, or am I making that up? Or how, or what's allowable, maybe that's a better way to say it.
I'm not sure I follow, Councilman Whit. We can always adopt higher standards.
Well, I guess...
Even more stringent standards.
Maybe that's the point, maybe we're changing whatever the, the fill requirement. Maybe the calculation is same, but what's allowable, we're looking, we've talked about changing that.
When I see everybody cutting, coming in, not cutting in, but we're talking about cut, coming in with a lot more cut, let's go ahead and tighten those standards, and maybe they'll come in with even less. And let's focus, if, if I'm correct here, maybe I'm not correct, but let's focus on not the eight inches, but what you need to achieve one percent. So what you need to achieve one percent slope, but no more than eight inches. If they, if they come in under eight inches, that's really not it.
Councilmember Lewis or Potsy?
The, the, the biggest concern I have here tonight is the ci, that a citizen who's right next door to this is perceiving that the city government is not taking care of him and his, and he's, his property is at an increased chance of being flooded because of the way the house was built next door to him. That's the most serious thing here tonight. And we, I believe that you're trying to diligently apply standards, not trying to change standards. I want, what I hear you say, you're diligently trying to apply the standards that are already existing. And to the extent that you have the proper staff and talent to go out and do that, the more effective you can be. And the problem that we've had is some of the rent-a, rent-a, rent-a cops? The rent, rent reviewers are not as, not as effective as we'd like them to be. So I appreciate what you've brought to City of Bel Air and the progress that we've made. And I'm sorry that we can't take care of a citizen next door that's having to potentially have, be flooded because another builder tried to fast-talk you and fast-talk the City of Bel Air into, into giving up and saying, and walking away from it. But they don't know who, that that may not happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, yes, I, I don't like the fact that this hadn't been put to rest, but I have to prioritize those other three, four, there are more addresses with worse violations. We're at the top. But that's hard, because everybody's issue is a priority.
Councilmember Lewis?
Okay, with 112 Marrakesh issue, as well as, well, first of all, 112 Marrakesh, I was confused, there was an email some time ago, I was looking for it, it's, no, you're trying to find it right now. But the question was, the, the new owner moved in, of course, they want a place to live. And the question was, do they have a, a valid certificate of occupancy, a temporary? I saw something with a signature on it, but I didn't know if that was supposed to mean, is this signature valid, is this signature not valid? Is there a valid certificate of occupancy or a valid temporary?
We don't show one issue.
There is not one issue.
But what I provided you was, it looks like Mr. Summers provided a signed TCO, and it might have had their names on it, but it wasn't released. Did that make it to the builder? So that's, was the intent of my email, like, hmm, I wonder if there's an oopsie here. But the permit technicians say it wasn't released.
All right, and the same thing for forty-eight seventeen Laurel, where they are, there are, there are, they are making changes to those flood vents, correct? That's, that's a...
Yes, they've been lowered.
Okay, and so that's, they've got a temporary certificate of occupancy.
They got a TCO after the homeowners moved in, when they shouldn't have moved in, when I got a commitment from the builder to start lower, or abating the violation, to do the remedial work to lower the flood vents, and he popped right on it.
So those are still, that one is temporary pending, whether the, the builder carries through?
Apparently, we have the drainage, I'll need the new final elevation certificate showing compliance for the flood vents. Hopefully, all that will, the drainage was submitted, but the elevation certificate wasn't, as far as I'm aware of. But, yeah, we'll need to look at that. It appears that the neighbor, the complainant, was okay as of Friday with R just having received the drainage. I think the complainant would prefer that we verify that the drainage plan meets all the codes.
We're talking quite a bit about the regulatory aspect, which is, of course, but one piece of the bigger picture. We're, we're talking about specific addresses now, as well as kind of more generically. Just kind of getting back to the broader question of the, the town hall meeting, we heard from a couple of speakers concerning the Chimney Rock Conveyance Cypress Ditch, that maybe be appropriate, whether that's Mike, whether that's James, whether it's a colleague to my right to, to maybe weigh in on that, because obviously, interesting historical aspect of the evolution of our drainage system, but a very obvious impact for our north-south drainage.
Yes, when we did the, the master drainage concept plan, you know, we had three different concepts that we looked at, and one of those was discharging into Cypress Ditch with associated detention system for it. And that, that was brought up, that, that flood control at one time and one point actually blocked the drainage that was flowing south directly to the bio. But we didn't find any evidence of that, that flood control provided. So if, if we were to open that back up and allow that to go to, to the Meyerland area again, we'd have to mitigate that impact as it, as it is today.
So when, when you say blocking it up, I mean, having gone down there and looked at it, I don't think it's like a plug, I don't think it's a plug or a restrictor, James. It's, as I recall, instead of, they, they re, they diverted the piping, so instead of just going straight north-south, and now juts.
Well, yeah, and it, it's an eighty-four inch, it's, it actually is, is elevated above the flow line in Cypress Ditch, so it's, it acts as kind of an overflow into, into the ditch system.
You're saying bridge is over, you got it running both ways?
It, it goes under Beechnut. In other words, it's, it's elevated.
Correct, so north of Beechnut, but south of the city limits.
It's able to go in that.
You're talking about South Rice.
Yes.
Oh, I'm, I think I said Chimney Rock, maybe I meant, maybe I meant South Rice.
I'm on the wrong arterial?
Chimney Rock does not go into...
No, it doesn't, Chimney Rock does not, it doesn't outfall on this.
I think that's, that's, that's me, I'm, I'm picturing my minds, I, when I said Chimney Rock, I meant South Rice.
Okay.
But in any event...
You're, I'm moving back.
Yeah, no, that, you're, I led you to the wrong street, you followed me. But in my mind's eye, I'm picturing, you know, what it looks like under there. But just generally, the question addressing from the residents, if I'm appreciating your answer correctly, you're saying there was no evidence that that had been done, but if we were to try to now undo it, that that triggers the do-no-harm...
It sure would.
Principle. Should that have been in place when this was introduced back whenever? If it was, I mean, you're saying you can't, that there was apparently no evidence that Harris County Flood Control District did that, well, how do you explain it? And why wasn't there a do-no-harm principle back then, as it's now restricted us?
Wait, wait, it's not restricted, is it? No, no, no.
It's, it's just a, no, it's not restricted.
Yeah, right, it's just a, it's just a culvert that goes under Beechnut.
That's right, it's, it's an elevated culvert.
I, I think we may be thinking about South Rice as opposed to Chimney Rock. That's, that was his comment, Chimney Rock. That's, yeah, that sounds like South Rice.
We, we...
I think we're in agreement then, that Chimney Rock is the culvert that then becomes an open ditch once you get onto the other side of Beechnut. I think what we're talking about in, in Mr. Goforth's comment, as I recall, was about South Rice, not about Chimney Rock.
Right.
So I think we're crossing signals here.
But, 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 yeah, but I don't, but what difference, look, it, just in the scheme of things, that culvert is de minimis. I mean, the reality is, is that if you go, look, it always helps to actually look at it, right? And if, and after Tropical Storm Beta, you know, the water was up to the bridge at Newcastle. You know the bridge I'm talking about, right? But there's plenty of capacity at South Rice. So that culvert, I guess my point is, is if it existed or didn't exist, I don't know that it really impacts, it may impact actually Newcastle, but it certainly doesn't impact South Rice, because there was plenty of capacity at South Rice at that point.
What you actually have is a restrictor under six-ten that we pointed out in the, in the master drainage concept plan, that is restricting flow from that, that western part of Cypress Ditch into Bray's Bio. So that was one of the improvements that were recommended.
In that yellow box on that...
Sure.
Image, it's, it's included in the plan. But for the seventy-five percent, as I recall, James, of the city that directly drains into Cypress Ditch?
Yes, sir.
So it sounds like what you're saying is working backwards from the outfall. So Newcastle is about as close as you're going to get within the city limits that is right there, working your way back upstream. It sounds like the impact is most felt, I don't know that, and understandably, but any, so there's a six-ten restriction, and then residents have identified concern that I think, let's put a pin in that for tonight, because we need to run this to ground, because there's a shared concern about whether it's Chimney Rock, I believe we're talking about South Rice here, but regardless, the impact would not be felt on the western edge as much as it would be felt downstream because of the flow that's now running east, rather than getting out through the north-south conveyance straight to the bio. That, as opposed to running down Cypress Ditch and filling it.
So, I mean, if you go down there and look, and I, and I've actually gone down there with Charles Goforth and looked at it, I...
I think several of us have.
Yeah, so I don't know that there's, like I said, I'm not sure that it really has a big impact. If you took it away, and, and, I mean, it's like everything else, right? It depends on the storm, right? You could imagine a storm where, hey, having that extra capacity to go in makes a difference. Kind of hard to imagine, but, you know, it might. I guess my point is, I, it was never bigger than it is now, was it? I mean, do we have any reason to believe it was different than it is now?
I don't.
But it's there, it's over, but it's there already.
Councilmember Lewis, and then Gordon.
Just, just a little bit of clarification, because four of us have done the walk down Cypress Ditch, so we've seen it, picture's worth a thousand words. I sent Patrice my PowerPoint from two ye, two weeks ago. Yeah, there's a picture. So the story that I heard from Charles Goforth was that Cypress Ditch was, it wasn't that it was blocked or diverted, it was that Cypress Ditch was deepened back whenever. It deepened, and as a consequence of that deepening, it basically left the, the inflow to Rice Ditch perched, we would call that perched, so that the water has to get, I believe he said nine foot deep, I'm, I'm, this is a long time ago, so I might be pulling that up, but nine foot deep at that point, before it starts to go into Rice Ditch. And I said, well, that would be nine foot of water down in Southdale, before it starts going down Rice Ditch. But, but I, I don't think, but, but I do think it's not a matter of it being blocked. He said, there's nothing, there's no evidence of anything being blocked. It's not that it's blocked, it's that it's perched, it's perched. Well, they, well, it, the ditch was deepened and, and so left the drain perched, so it's not to go into Rice. I, and this is, this I brought up two weeks ago, and I got assurances from our, our engineers that they will include that, or Michael Leeds, that they will include that. that they will include that in their discussions because that's what we've been begging for. We've been trying this. Charles Goforth got ahold of me, Lowly Geologist, I, I know the geology, got ahold of me two years ago when I first took office and, and a couple other council members. And I know the mayor was, we are on separate occasions, so we weren't forming a quorum. But we got the full story from, from Charles Goforth and I'm, I've been talking about it ever since because it's true. And my question on this slide was, is there detention within the drainage ditches? Because the Master Drainage Concept Plan, I thought, what I understood for Cypress Ditch was there's supposed to be detention in that ditch.
That's correct.
So if you can get detention in that ditch, then you can get more if you involve some other ditches.
But again, we need to open up that.
I don't care. That's right. That's right.
I think James was trying to get a word in edgewise and then Councilmember Gordon. And if not, then Councilmember Gordon.
Well, we, we can certainly circle back again with flood control to see if they have any evidence that, that was deepened and it was allowed to go to, to the east versus, you know, directly to Braze Bio. But again, if we, if we tried to open up that opening across Beechnut, you know, further south.
We do not want to flood Meyerland.
We'd have to mitigate that. So it's, it's a matter of capacity with our, our north-south arterials and detaining flow to mitigate any impact downstream as Councilman Gordon is.
What I think is, we mentioned this last time when we talked about this, is that ultimately we'll have to decide what capacity we need in Cypress Ditch to be able to service the areas that contribute to it.
And in Rice Ditch or Chimney Rock, that's the part.
I'm, I'm getting there and you're, you're interrupting me while I was talking. So the, the point here is that, that when you determine what the capacity is that you need, you look at options for providing that capacity. That could be provided via a enlarged Rice Ditch connection. It could be provided in an enlarged Cypress Ditch. Those are all different engineering options that would have to be considered to achieve an objective, which is to convey additional floodwaters to Braze Bio. So what we're saying here is that when we look at this, we have an objective, which is to convey more floodwaters through Cypress Ditch because that benefits Bel Air. Now, how we do that, we can do it through Cypress Ditch, we can do it through here. That needs to be evaluated. The, the challenge here is that Rice Ditch and that portion of Chimney Rock are outside of the city of Bel Air and needs to therefore be a partnership project with the people who are responsible for that piece of infrastructure. I'm with you. That's my firm opinion as well. We got it.
So thank y'all for your, for your ongoing participation. We're still in questions from Mayor and Council. I think Mayor Tim Fraser had to hand up or Councilmember Lewis.
I just have a couple of questions to get back to what the presentation informed because there are a lot of residents who've asked some other questions about first grants. And I know from research that I've done, a lot of cities and mud districts, everybody, Councilman Gordon, are trying to get some of the same dollars that we would like to get. Are you in a position to talk about a prioritization of how we can go about getting some of the dollars that I know we want to, to get? And then secondly, the prioritization of improvements. Can we be in terms of what we communicate to the residents, anything more with how we intend to take that forward? If you could generalize what those two things might be. First, how effective and successful can we be since everybody, everywhere is going for some of the same grant money that we'd be going for?
It's, it's very true. It's a very competitive grant landscape. In disaster recovery spheres, there's different options for funding. After a disaster, after a recognized, presidentially declared disaster, FEMA basically, well, the federal government through FEMA appropriates a portion of the damages into the hazard mitigation program that are then made available to entities inside the declared disaster area to apply for. So there's certain disaster-related grant opportunities that are tied to a specific disaster. And so, for example, after Hurricane Harvey, a lot of money came into the hazard mitigation grant program or also through the Community Development Block Grant Program through HUD that was specifically derived from Harvey. A lot of those dollars have been spent. They were allocated to projects that were shovel-ready, that were, were closer into completion. And, and some of those funding sources are wrapping up and concluding. There are other funding sources, for example, I mentioned the, the Flood Infrastructure Fund, which is a state-of-Texas infrastructure fund that was created by the 2019 legislature, I believe, that basically allocated money from the state's budget into a pool for applications for flood mitigation projects. That had a first-time infusion. The first set of grants has been awarded. The intent is, in future legislative cycles, to allocate additional funding into that pool. That's an important pool because that is not subject to a disaster, meaning that it's subject to the state appropriating those funds. Whereas, for example, if we wanted to apply for a hazard mitigation grant from FEMA again, well, that money is tied to a disaster and it's spent, so we'd have to wait for the next flood and then use the money that's dedicated after the flood. And so we need to be strategic here in that there, there are some grants that are still available tied to Harvey. There are other grants that are not tied to Harvey. For example, the FEMA Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities, the BRIC program is an annual program not tied to a specific disaster. And so we need to be able to allocate our ideas to get there. Now, what's very important is almost all of these grant programs do have a strong reliance on the benefit-cost ratio, meaning being able to determine what are the avoided flood damages from your project and are those avoided flood damages greater than the cost of the project? And when you have strong benefit-to-cost ratios, then you are generally more positively received as an application for these grant projects. That's one key step that we've talked about for our immediate near-term actions is right now, our projects, we don't have benefit-cost ratios because it wasn't, it wasn't part of the original, original scope of work. But we need to be able to advance our projects to the point where we can have the components that would be necessary to put our projects in competition. So that's one of the things that, as we look at prioritizing near-term actions, is making sure that, that we're able to apply. Because if you don't have the necessary components to substantiate an application, you, you may not be able to apply. So it's a, it's, it's a complex process and I think we need to stay vigilant on it because different opportunities arise at different times. But, but as we've said before, for example, the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is 75% federal, 25% local. I like that. That's, that's a good ratio of funding sources, but we need to be eligible to apply for it and we need to have a project that would perform well under the criteria of that program. And that's the piece we need to continue working on to make sure we're eligible.
Thank you. Further questions from Mayor and Council? Councilmember Wesley.
So the Master Drainage Concept Plan is complete? Is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's not on the Master Drainage Concept Plan website? On the website, it says that it's going to be completed on January of 2021. I have to say, that's one of the more aggravating aspects of this whole process is the fact that originally it was supposed to be done in 2020 and now it was done. So it either should be put on the website, which probably be the best place, or maybe on a weekly memo, you could have it included. That'd be great. Thanks.
Anything further? Councilmember Lewis?
I think several citizens mentioned tunnels. I don't know if some, if some people have left that were. I've gotten mixed messages about tunnels. On the one hand, I thought that, that, did all three concepts of the Master Drainage Concept Plan include tunnels? Because I thought even Concept C was a tunnel in Cypress Ditch.
So can I clarify one thing on tunnels?
Yes.
So tunnels is, it's, it's a, it's a interesting differentiation because you can have large diameter storm sewers and you can have a tunnel. Now, they're constructed in different means and they work slightly different. So for example, traditionally speaking, and you'll see this a lot on large projects, you'll have an open cut, large diameter storm sewer where you can dig down, put in a 10-foot-by-10-foot concrete box culvert. It's large diameter, but it's constructed through normal construction methods. Tunnels, on the other hand, are typically bored, meaning there's a tunnel boring machine that, that you insert and you bore. Now, an important difference here is the depth of these components is that, that large diameter storm sewers are usually 10 feet or so below grade, whereas a deep stormwater tunnel could be bored 50 feet or 75 feet below grade. One other important piece here is that the tunnels that, that are, and we're not actually proposing a tunnel. In the end, a, a tunnel is an engineering endpoint to an objective. But the, the tunnels are not detention. They are not put there to detain water. They're put there to convey water via the difference in, in pressure differential between the upstream part of the tunnel and the receiving stream of the tunnel. You also have the ability to have pumped tunnels. You can have gravity flow tunnels and you can have pumped assisted tunnels. But, but neither of them are designed as detention. They're designed as conveyance to get more water out. It's just the means by which you're, you're moving it out of the city.
I understand. I, I understand it.
That's, that's, it, it depends on where it outfalls to. And this is the piece, is that some of the tunnels that are being talked about would outfall to the Ship Channel, to the Turning Basin. In that instance, there is an elevation differential that allows those tunnels to flow via essentially an inverted siphon that, that continues to flow. Now. No. No, that's not, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm, what I'm saying is that there is a, an elevation differential between the Ship Channel and Bel Air that creates driving pressure that can actually push water collected in Bel Air out to the Ship Channel. Oh, it's probably about 30 feet.
It's about 48 feet. Your natural ground is 48, Ship Channel is zero, right sea level. It's about 48 feet.
But this goes back to the point that I said, is that tunnels is a, it's an engineering solution to achieve an objective of conveyance. Now, what's important here is that we don't just jump to tunnels because we like them. You would go that direction if a tunnel was a more cost-efficient construction method of achieving that goal. And to be honest here, if we can construct, you know, four 10-by-10 box culverts under South Rice, that's going to be cheaper than a deep stormwater tunnel. But if, for example, there's no feasible way to cross all the utilities or things that would drive up the costs, well, then maybe it could be a more cost-effective solution. But in all of these things, the goal is to find the most cost-effective engineering means of achieving an outcome, which is increased conveyance into Braze Bio.
So I think we're falling into the same trap we did one or two workshops ago, which is trying to engineer from the council table. What this discussion really needs to be about is the policy-driven, what are we trying to achieve? You guys, experts out there, go figure it out for us and bring us back options and solutions. But the purpose of this discussion, at least as I appreciate it, is don't just tell the engineers, hey, go solve the problem. You have to tell them what the problem is as you define it. What are you trying to get them to do? We're going to have plenty of opportunities. Oh, I may not, but someone in council have plenty of opportunities to worry about, does tunnels make sense? Does tunnels not make sense? I don't think that needs to be resolved tonight for present purposes. Present purposes is, do we have a policy direction as a city, what we're trying to achieve? That we're going to rely on our experts to do for us.
I'm sorry, but, but I had a question and I was interrupted too.
It's all you.
Because I believe this gentleman has the answer to my question was, do we have tunnels proposed in the Master Drainage Concept?
We, we evaluated a tunnel as part of Concept A and B. Concept C did not have any tunnels in it.
Thank you.
Let me just keep it that short?
So I'm so glad you focused us because I come back to where I was a couple meetings ago. All right, look, this is all, I don't have any issue with this. We now, we need to get specific. So what do we need to do to get specific to tell the engineers what they, what, what is our criteria? And I guess my, and look, I don't feel qualified to, I mean, I can do it if you want me to, but I'm probably not qualified to say, you know, what that criteria is. I mean, and that criteria, as I appreciate it, could be as simple as that all those east-west streets would be, all the, you know, built with two-year storm tunnels or storm drains and all of the north-south would be on a 10-year storm drain capacity. So that there would always be, and then, and then you could figure out, well, okay, if you did that, what is the, how much detention do you need? You know, can we get that through, I mean, you know, if it was small enough acre feet, you could get that through Cypress Ditch, for example, or you could get it through whatever. Who knows? But at least then we'd know what we, what we had to get, right? Because right now, in the, in the plan, there was something like potentially 800 acre feet, which, that's a lot. I mean, it is. But I don't know, I mean, I don't know, and I don't think anybody knows until you do the calculations. If you said, for example, that should be the criteria, what, how many acre feet, right? And I don't know, and maybe they can say, but I don't know that there's, that they were that specific when they did the Master Drainage Concept Plan. In other words, were you like saying, okay, it's going to be two years for all the side streets and then, you know, 10 years for the trunk lines? Or you didn't, you didn't really get into that level of specificity, did you?
I, I think it's important because I've listened to a lot of talk about the Master Drainage Concept Plan. To your question, we didn't specifically nail in 10-year exactly does this, but we ran those love, those different storm events to help give that first order and magnitude of, here's kind of what you're looking at, right? Like, it's kind of like if you're going to go build a house. My wife wanted 5,000 square feet. I wanted 2,000, right? But we had to put some cost numbers and get some ideas, conceptual ideas to it. I think now, what I would propose to y'all is to use that data to help inform. Ross is trying to go to that next step of saying, okay, we've got some cost numbers out of that Master Drainage Concept Plan for a 10-year system. It still has some challenges that haven't been addressed, the detention. I mean, is, you're going to have a significant level of detention required if you want to make a major improvement. That's probably your biggest challenge. Your second biggest challenge is you have no open space nor right-of-way in the city. You're tearing everything up. So looking at that, I think that kind of will help inform y'all's conversations about where to set those levels.
Well, and, and since I have you up there, we'll get the extra minute. It also strikes me that, and I'm being overly simplistic here, but you know, that's the high D in me, right? I want to get to the point. But hey, you know, most of the north-south trunk lines could be improved simply by, as Ross described, hey, you go and dig up the street and drop in 10-foot boxes, whatever. I mean, maybe they're not 10-foot boxes. Maybe they're 20-foot boxes, if such a thing exists, whatever. I mean, that's, I'm exaggerating. I'm exaggerating.
Don 610 or something like that with that box.
But anyway, the point being, I'm not sure what my point was with, with that. But it seems, no, there, there's one north-south that's a bigger issue and that's along the railroad track because it doesn't seem like there's a simple solution to that. And number one, would you agree with that? And number two, and, and I'm not, it just seems like it's a harder solution or harder problem. And number two is, you know, hypothetically, just as a layperson, you know, it looks like, hey, hypothetically, could you lower Newcastle to the point or lower the? hey, hypothetically, could you lower Newcastle to the point or lower the drain under Newcastle to the point where you could just take it all out into Newcastle?
Give me address that.
Yes, I, I'm curious.
You know, actually, well, that's Concept A and Concept C. The idea behind Concept A was because the railroad track is your downstream side. Personally, as a flood control engineer, I would like a good Harris County flood control, 200-foot right-of-way channel along the entire railroad. That obviously is not, I would say it's not possible. It's not desired because that would require taking properties to build said channel, right? So to your point, that, that was what Concept A was trying to achieve was how do we collect the water where the water is going, right? Concept C was when, well, we're not going to do this. So now can we put enough under Newcastle that we can pick some of that water and bring it back? Which, I, that's kind of what some of y'all's local streets have already done that have been built. They've already flipped their storm sewers back. Topography, in a big event though, still takes it to the railroad track. So those are still some challenges, but that's kind of the Concept A, Concept C comparison, if that kind of helps.
And, and I mean, along those lines, it seems to me, I mean, again, just looking at it after Tropical Storm Beta, part of the problem is, is that even though all of the other outfalls into Cypress Ditch were free and clear, Newcastle was not. Because it's such a low point there by that bridge. It seems to me that that's an issue that hypothetically, in terms of a partnership, one of the things that's going to have to be done is if you really want to improve Cypress Ditch, you got to replace those bridges. I mean, is that, I mean, they just seem like a huge impediment there.
To, to some extent, I, I personally haven't seen the different differential head losses of bridges that would concern me usually. Now, if we're going to go put in detention in Cypress Ditch, we either have to re-tie in back underneath those bridges or we have to replace them and expand them. The cost improvements that we've done includes, includes bridge replacements. So that's, we, we included that in the cost estimate.
Yeah, also included taking out all those pipes that are crossing the Cypress Ditch.
It has utility adjustments in there. I would tell you, that's a very hard thing to cost at this stage. So we basically counted them and added 200, 300,000 dollars utility adjustment.
Well, hypothetically, those are all part of the Houston wastewater treatment plant. And if they moved to Sims Alameda, who knows?
I think they still have to stay there though because they're still providing, those are surface lines getting through that. So that, I mean, it's, it's not that they can't be adjusted.
Right, right, right. No, I get it. It's just that costs money.
So Councilmember Wesley started, I think, with a question that I might attempt to answer, you know, having focused the discussion, I'll attempt it again, which is, when do we get to make that declaration? This is the standard, this is what we want to achieve, go calculate it. So I look at the city attorney for guidance on this, but I believe we'll need a future agenda item. You know, we don't take action in a town hall meeting. This isn't the end of the discussion. But I'm kind of looking also at Councilmember Gordon. I think that's probably what we've contemplated is initiating a discussion. We've had a couple of workshops up to this point. I've seen the same presentation in various iterations a few times now. A lot of good stuff in there. Hopefully that's filtering down to interested residents. Town hall discussion's been a good one. Where do we see this going? And I guess I'm, I'm still kind of looking at you on that, but I think that's where this has to be headed for formal action unless staff were to say, you know, this discussion has been enlightening, we, we have what we need from you. But I, I assume we're, we're headed down the path towards a formal adoption of principles and direction.
I, I think that's a, a strong possibility. Now, now there's an interesting piece. Some cities have adopted like formal drainage criteria, saying, you know, this will be designed to this standard and they codify it inside their, their drainage criteria, which I think we will ultimately would, would probably desire to do. I, I think that a, as Mr. Wilcox was saying, and, and in response to this piece, is that, that as part of the master drainage concept plan, they did, they, they did scales of things. They, they could determine, well, if we achieve this, it would cost this, if it did this, it would cost this. And I think what's, what's very important here, to your point of like, okay, you know, do we want a two-year storm sewer on local streets or a five-year? Well, a good next step would be to go to our engineering consultant and say, hey, please provide me with a, an updated capital improvement plan for either two-year or five-year. And then once I see the numbers, we can say, okay, well, I can't afford a five-year, let's go with a two-year. Or, oh, that actually was reasonable, let's pick this. And so I, I think the hard part here is that it'd be nice to be able to just say, we're going to adopt the criteria, but absent from cost, it's a very dangerous thing to adopt something without understanding what the cost implications are of adopting that criteria. And that's why I've said all along, I think this is a little bit of an iterative approach because we don't want to accidentally incur a burden that we don't want to pay for. But we also want to be clear and transparent with what we're trying to achieve. So I think if we create some bounding ranges and then ask for cost information to inform it, then we can get to that point here shortly.
And so, and the, and would the cost information be as simple as on a per-mile basis, what it, what the difference is between two and five years? I mean, it could be that simple.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I, I mean, a, as a reference in my career, I've, I've done master drainage planning for an entire city in Saudi Arabia where I did exactly that piece of saying, you know, across this city, it would be either 20 billion or 40 billion or 80 billion off of that same functionality. So it, it is possible to, to at a very high level make those estimates. The hard part is, is how confident are you in those estimates? Depends on how much work you put into the, to the process.
So, and then taking it one step further, and I think this would be a question also just generally in terms of how we think about this, is, you know, really, if you had no east-west, and we've talked about this, if you had no east-west storm drains at all, the streets would drain, I mean, you're, you're no far further away than two blocks from any one of these main north-south trunk lines. I mean, so is it really worth, I mean, just conceptually, on a big, on a, that, that extra capacity isn't going to help you in a big storm because everything's full. Anyway, right? You real, the only thing that's really going to help you is if you get your trunk lines bigger. I mean, would that be a fair statement? And then as a result, I mean, it, it really, so I guess in my mind, I'm like, hey, the north-south trunk lines, they need to be, that's where you're going to get your most bang for the buck. I let them put it that way.
I, I think, I think that we, when we talked about this last time, you're, you're correct. The north-south trunk lines is the biggest bang for the buck because if you have a properly-sized north-south trunk line, even an old storm sewer will perform better by having the ability to flow into it. That being said, what we've been talking about in the local drainage aspect is that if you're reconstructing the street anyways. Put back in the storm sewer that achieves your objective there. And so it, it is hard because Bel Air is so flat. And when you get into this, we're also looking at the ability of water to cascade overland. And if it's literally flat, then you literally don't cascade overland. But the fact that a storm sewer is 10 feet underground in South Rice creates enough elevation differential that you can push water through a storm sewer, but you can't push water through a street. And in that instance, the, the storm sewer is very critical to providing a level of protection in that area. So they're, they're linked. But I think the, the important point is, is you're spot on here that the reason why the master drainage concept plan focused on the north-south collectors is because you can improve the local streets all you want, but if there's not enough capacity to pick it up, then you're not going to achieve those benefits. So I think as a, as a matter of policy, what we've tried to put forward here is an emphasis on the trunk lines, recognizing that as we reconstruct streets for the sake of fixing an old street, if we do it systematically, we will produce a comprehensive drainage system, not a piecemeal drainage system.
I'm looking to my left and I'm looking to my right. Anything further in this town hall meeting? And if not, then I'll ask the question before we continue to the regular meeting. We've been going about two and a half hours. Do you want to take a short break or do we?
I've agreed with that.
Having anticipated the same. Well, I just want to thank all the members of the public again who participated in this town hall meeting, staff, everyone on council. Good discussion. And we'll see where this continued discussion leads us. Thank you all again. So town hall meeting is concluded and adjourned at 8:29 PM. We'll recess briefly before returning back, maybe about 10 minutes or so for the regular meeting.